Get everyone on the same page. This is the location, a locational map of showing 121 Chamberlain. It's a former convent or building from the adjacent Catholic Church. This is Chamberlain right here. There is single-family residential down here. There's single-family residential to the east as well. This is the zoning map of the R1 district. This is east of Edison, just for some clarity. It's also, it's off the map, but it's west of Perry Street. And so this is showing the, the street view for this area. The applicant has proposed to repurpose the existing structure on the site into a shelter and halfway house, and there are some other secondary accessory uses that are proposed. It is unclear to the city when the building was built. We do not have city records, but we know that the building has been in existence since 1951, and as I mentioned, was previously used as a rectory for the church. But this was subdivided off from the church property some years ago. In total, there appears to be 31 rooms set aside for housing individuals. These rooms range from 81 square feet to 314 square feet. The floors are connected by two staircases. It is unclear how many individuals the applicant intends to house on site. However, the applicant has provided a list of services in their application. You find it in your packet they intend to provide. These services include case management, job readiness training, mental health counseling, health and wellness services, nutritional support, and connection to public benefits, along with the shelter and halfway house. These community service facilities are only allowed with a special exception in the R2, which is duplex, R3, which is multifamily, C0, which is office, C1, which is local business, and C3, which is corridor, commercial corridor districts, zoning districts. The R1 does not permit shelters due to the fact that shelters are often high occupancy land uses that increase population density, which is different than the typical makeup of an R1 zoning district or neighborhood for that matter. It's intended for low density and homogenous development with some larger symbiotic uses such as religious institutions and schools which are permitted. Community service facilities are required to be located on A or B streets. And I just wanted to describe, an A street is a major thoroughfare. That would be Woodward, West Yuron, you know, Perry as examples. That's based on speed limit and a number of vehicles. B streets are more corridor connection vehicles. That would be something more like Kennett as an example. The requirements for that in the code for an A or B street is to accommodate the number of individuals serviced on site and for support vehicles, delivery trucks, emergency vehicles, also access to public transport that would be helpful for the people living here. The subject parcel is located on a C street, which is Chamberlain Street, which is a neighborhood street with, with its makeup, it's on-street parking, the lowest speed limit in the city as an example. Community service facilities are also required to make separations from certain other land uses to avoid clustering of such facilities in close proximity to single-family residential areas. This location is compliant with the setback requirements when looking at that solely. Again, just showing different images of this building, and then this is how it looks from Chamberlain Street. And this, this is a Google street view, but it looks very, and it's from about six, seven years ago, but it looks very similar today. Now, I want to be very clear, the standards for a use variance to allow something that is not normally permitted in this area, there are seven standards. It does not matter the, necessarily the proposal itself, who is applying, it is solely, the ZBA should solely base their decision on the seven standards of approval. Number one, the property in question cannot be reasonably used or cannot yield a reasonable return on a prudent investment if the property would be used only for a purpose allowed in a zoning district. Number two, the plight is due to unique circumstances peculiar to the property and not to general neighborhood conditions. Number three, the use to be authorized by the variance will not alter the essential character of the area and locality. Number four, the problem is not self-created. Number five, the spiritus ordinance will be observed, public safety and welfare secured, and substantial justice done. Six and seven are requirements that have to do with both special exceptions and also general standards when it comes to air, light, welfare, pollution, things like that. So there's more analysis in your staff report. I hope that you're familiar with this from last month's reading in both packets. The staff report other than, has not changed other than really acknowledging the tabling that occurred last month. So I'm just going to recap some of these. It is unlikely that the existing structure can be repurposed for a use that is permitted in an R1 district easily. Although costly, the structure could be replaced with a single-family home, bed of breakfast, community center, cultural center, religious institution, or school. The existing structure on the site presents the greatest challenge toward redeveloping the property. The plight is not due to general neighborhood conditions. The area is residential in character and shelters are a place of residence, and the population density that shelters and current neighborhoods render them incompatible with single-family districts, which are often sensitive to medium and high intensity land uses. The applicant could choose to locate their operation on a parcel zoned appropriately elsewhere in the city, or alternatively, and this was discussed, could go for a rezoning. However, you know, in initial discussions with the applicant before an application, you know, that could be seen as a spot zone as well. So there are some challenges with trying to rezone this property, but there are other locations at the city that this is a feasible location to do. Approval of this variance would not result in the impairment of light or air to adjacent properties, and it is possible the approval of this variance could increase the congestion on neighborhood streets if service and emergency vehicles are trying to access the site on, not a frequent basis, but on a more regular basis. Granted, this variance would allow the property to be developed and much-needed service provided in the community, and the proposed use does not appear to be harmonious with the master plan's future land use. And I want to clarify, this is the 2014 plan because the current one has not been adopted. The subject parcel is intended for neighborhood residential. The proposed use may alter the essential character by disturbing that low-density single-family nature with the high density use. So as you look at those, that analysis I've really provided on these two slides, we, staff is really weighing the pros and cons for the ZBA for consideration of this variance. Now, staff, as a matter of practice, does not provide a recommendation on variances. So we have listed motions up here for the ZBA to continue. The one thing I just want to remind with a use variance, it does require a vote of five affirmatives to vote for a use variance. It's a little different than a dimensional variance. That is my report. I'll be happy to entertain any questions the ZBA may have. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the board?
So I was forwarded information on a post about an open house that took place at this property. Does that have any bearing whatsoever on our decision here? I'm guessing no, but I just want to make sure that's clarified.
So, okay. I'm going to answer this with our attorney. So there was a gathering, the, the city also saw the social media post, and, and we had staff reach out to the applicant. It was an open house. There, there were some people there. There have been some tickets. But the one thing I would caution the ZBA is, there's no proof of guilty at this point. This has to go through due process. The ZBA should not really consider that when reviewing this application tonight. And as I mentioned earlier, you really should focus on the seven standards that are here at this time, so.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that was clear. Thank you.
Counselor, we're in agreement with that, just to get it on record?
Absolutely. I, I would add that if the ZBA is especially concerned about this event, they could postpone to consider the results of that, that hearing before the district court. But otherwise, all decisions should be related to the standards of approval.
And I just wanted to clarify further, it was just an open house, and any commercial gathering on a site, you know, if you're getting your architects together, you know, contractors together, that's one thing, but to advertise in something, there is a policy at the city, you do need a certificate of occupancy, and obviously, the applicant is trying to achieve that, and hopefully, if they get a, an approval from the ZBA, that would, that would help them to get that along with the building department inspections and approvals. But I just wanted to just clarify, that's the, the large matter for that.
Would you like to ask a question of the administration?
Can we go on just with just five people? Shouldn't we have six?
We, we, we can vote, but they need five affirmatives for an approval, regardless of how many people are sitting up here.
In order to vote, you have to have a quorum, which you do have a quorum. But regardless of the amount of people that are currently here tonight, a use variance requires a two-thirds vote, which is five out of the seven individuals that are impaneled on the, the Board of Appeals. So regardless of the fact that you only have six here today, you still need five to, five affirmative votes to grant a use variance.
Any other questions of the administration? Would the applicant like to speak?
If you could just turn the microphone on, it's the right button up at the bottom. The red light will come on. There we go.
Hello. Good evening, everyone.
State your name and address.
My name is Shanti Turner. My address is 344 West Iroquois, Pontiac, Michigan.
Thank you.
So thank you for having me. I just wanted to explain a little bit more about the program Turner Housing and the services that we're going to offer. It is a transitional housing program with wraparound services. So by no means it's not a shelter. Individuals will be able to stay there for six months to up to two years. And with that stay, they'll, it's a voluntary stay, but with that, they are only referred in from local agencies that we've already had agreements with, that we're in, you know, communication with to have partnerships, you know, resulting in the zoning approval. Some of those organizations are OSA, Goodwill, Lighthouse, Oakland County Health Division, things of that nature. Well, we will offer wraparound services, including financial literacy, life skills training. I'm a licensed therapist. I also have a team of therapists that we will be offering individual and group therapies, things of that nature, to really set them up for success long-term. So, you know, oftentimes, the nature of a lot of local agencies is to offer, you know, rental assistance, bill pay assistance, things of that nature. But then in a couple months, you know, they're back in that same predicament. So we want to offer long-term sustainability where they will have independent living long-term, where they will have their own housing, you know, life skills training, financial literacy, those resume building, higher education, the things that they need to really be successful. And, you know, I've been working in social work for 15 years, and I've seen that need that, you know, people have a little bit, you know, they get pieces from everywhere, but by us being here in one place, they don't have to worry about the barriers that come along with finding transportation, making the time to go to these different life skills training and groups and things like that. And we want to offer and hire within the community as well. So a lot of Pontiac residents have already reached out to volunteer services. We have tutoring, resume writing, and things like that, that people have volunteered their time and their services to be able to offer that. We have 24-hour security that will be on-site as long as, as well as housing managers that will be living on-site as well, one on each floor, to ensure the safety of the community. Most of our residents won't have any vehicles, and that's part of that eligibility criteria that, you know, these are people that are in extreme need. We are not accepting any sex offenders, anyone with violent crimes, no one that's on substances or anything like that, that we will have to refer out. We also did have a conversation with the church behind us, and we were able to come to agreement with their concerns with safety and parking, as noted last time. And, yeah, we just want to work together to be able to service the community all together and provide these services, you know, in-house within the community.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any questions of the applicant?
Yes, I have a question. Hi. So you said no shelter?
No, it's not a shelter.
So where did the shelter come from, Mary?
Based on the application that, that's in here, that's, that's where we, and it is a community service facility. And, and based on the definition of community service facility within the zoning ordinance, which I can read in just a second, we determine that that's what this is.
Okay. So would you be servicing individuals who have mental health? Would you be doing business with CNS, Easter Seals and them?
Absolutely. Yep, those are some of the local partnerships that we have already, you know, been in communications with and things like that. And I actually worked with CNS for like five years, so I know a lot of people there. And I was a program manager, so I was able to run a program for several amount of years and be offered hired positions where I see the need that I wanted to kind of bring the community in and be able to help, you know, with my knowledge and my personal experiences as well.
Okay.
Board member May, I just want to clarify, staff got this completely from the application. I just want to say what's on here. Really, Turner Housing to provide transitional housing with wraparound services that would result in reducing homelessness, improving public health, increasing economic growth, reducing recidivism, strengthen families, crime reduction, empower community engagement. And then the next sentence talks a little bit more about that traditional housing. There are four types of facilities that qualify as community service facilities. Both halfway houses and homeless shelters are considered that, and while, you know, the ZBA can, can review the merits of that, that was what staff determined the use to be for this application.
Oh, okay.
And we are not by all means a halfway house either.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions of the applicant?
Yeah, I, I just have one. Thank you for being here. I know this has been rescheduled twice, so thank you. And obviously, you have a lot of support for the project and the need. Like, the need is, is great. I'm devil's advocate here. If it's not approved in this building because of the residential character of the neighborhood, is there kind of a Plan B for somewhere else that may be better suited for this type of service and, and wraparound service? Because what you've explained is absolutely wonderful and very, very much needed. So is there, is there a Plan B at all yet as, as a backup plan for location?
Um, no, no other locations, no.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
Mr. Chair. Go ahead. Ms. Turner, how many, how many folks are you anticipating to be in the facility at any point in time?
Um, so our first year, we are aiming to do a pilot program where we will have 10 to 15 residents there. There are 20 rooms, but we are using some of those rooms for community, like activities. We plan to have a computer lab, a library on-site, and then, you know, certain, like, therapy rooms. So some of those rooms would be utilized for that. So between 10 to 15 people.
Oh, that's not bad. Yeah, that's not bad. I'm sorry.
And again, you, no, no, no. And again, you said there will be, I believe you said one manager per floor, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, there will be a housing manager on each floor, 24-hour security.
Okay.
And there will be like staff on-site at all times. We have cameras surrounding the inside and outside of the building, in which all staff have access on their phones, that you get notifications, similar to like a Ring camera and things like that, where you're notified with any movement. Visiting is strictly one visitor per resident, and it has to be pre-approved. We also do a background check on the volunteer, I mean, the, the visitors that come in to ensure that they're not a danger, you know, to ourselves, our residents, and also, you know, keeping in mind the church as well. So there's a curfew, there will be no loitering and things outside, there's a no, a drug-free policy, there's no drugs allowed on-site.
Okay. Mr. Anderson?
How is the church involved in helping you out or working with you?
Um, so we have been in agreements, really, their biggest concerns were the safety as long, as well as the parking, which we have come to agreement with that. We also did talk to the father about maybe providing some Bible studies and things like that. He said he is kind of wrapped in. If he's available, he would, but if not, he has a couple deacons that will love to come in and offer those services. We offer to exchange calendars with one another so that our meetings and like their Bible studies and their events, we don't, you know, clash with one another so that we can both be mindful if there's anything going on to make sure that that congestion is kept down in the neighborhood.
So you have no opposition with the church or anything like that?
No.
Okay.
Um, question. So how long has Chamberlain House been closed down? Because I remember it as Chamberlain Group Home. How long has it been since they've been gone?
Um, so I purchased it from two men, and I believe they were running for a year or so, and I think that that's where a lot of the apprehension came from when they owned it. It was a lot of activities that were going on that we were aware of, I mean, that we were informed of. So prior to that, it operated as adult foster care for about 20 years or so. And actually, I had clients that I used to visit there, so very familiar.
They had a lot of clients.
Yep, they had a lot of clients there. Yep, they had between 18 and 20, because a large group home can be grouped, can be licensed for up to 20 people.
And just a point of information, it was, I believe, March of 2023, our code enforcement team really took an effective action there. I don't know the, the name of the previous tenant, but there were some just trepid living conditions, and, and they had closed that facility down at that time. So it's been about two years.
Oh, okay.
And I'd just like to point out, I know we have a lot of people here that are interested in how this is going to go. Us making decisions up here, we're doing it based on the findings of fact, and any decision that's made is not an indication of whether folks believe that this service is not needed and not useful and not a moral obligation. It, it's a board that has to consider the findings of fact, the standards that we're asked to look at. So I'm looking at this board, I know that they're going to do that and do it in good faith, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. So do we have a motion?
Yeah, we do. Hold on, let me get to that page here. Just hold on just a moment.
Oh.
I move to approve the use variance to allow for a community service facility at 121 Chamberlain Street based on the findings of the fact of the staff report.
Is there support?
Support.
So we've got motion by May, support by McClellan.
So I just have one thing for the ZBA to consider. The, the floor plan is showing roughly 30 residential rooms now, and I, I think we want to respect that the applicant is saying that they may not do that, but if the ZBA wanted to consider a condition on the limit of the number of residential rooms that is within your purview, if you want to work with the applicant on that. But otherwise, you know, it really is an approved facility, and they, you know, as long as it met the building code, could get as many, you know, in there as possible going forward. This is a permanent decision, you know what I mean? It, it stays with the property and goes on for a while. So that really is something the ZBA may consider if they want to.
Is there anyone that's interested in requesting an amendment to the motion? Seeing none, we have a motion on the board. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call.
Commissioner Burke.
We, we had, we had taken by the phone line.
Commissioner Burke.
Um, no, based on the findings of fact.
Commissioner Anderson.
Uh, yeah.
Commissioner Bueno.
No, based on the findings of fact.
Commissioner May.
Yes.
Commissioner, uh, Favacqua.
Yes.
And Chris McClellan.
Yes.
All right. Motion fails.
Sorry.
So is that it?
So what are the next steps?
You, you, you'll have to work with administration on next steps.
We'll reach out to you tomorrow with your next steps.
Okay.
Good morning.
None of us are elected officials.
They're not elected.
Neither are we.
I can do it in the hallway once the next item stops, so I can be right out in a minute.
Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just going to hold on a minute.
Thank you very much. We've been discussing for a long time.
Thanks, y'all.
All right. We do have to get started on our next item. If you're not sticking around, if you could step outside into the hallway, that'd be helpful. Okay, so our second hearing for today, if we're ready?
We're ready.
All right. So this case, you may recall, this applicant previously came forward to you in September of 2023. At that time, she was requesting a rear yard accessory structure garage about 1,200 square feet, over 1,200, which was larger than the footprint of the house. So the board, instead of denying, asked the applicant to work with staff to reduce the request and come back with something possibly more reasonable. And so the applicant has decided to come back. They have a brand-new application, and they have significantly reduced their request. So at this time, they are simply requesting a 100-square-foot variance from the 800 maximum, 800-square-foot maximum. I just want to give you all that history in case you have questions about why. So this is where the applicant is proposing to place the garage. It would be at the end of the driveway, quite a typical location. The applicant is requesting a variance from section 2.304, which mandates accessory structures in the R1 district, the single-family district, can be no greater than 800 square feet. At that time, she was requesting a rear yard accessory structure garage, about 1,200 square feet, over 1,200, which was larger than the footprint of the house. So the board, instead of denying, asked the applicant to work with staff to reduce the request and come back with something possibly more reasonable. And so the applicant has decided to come back. They have a brand-new application and they have significantly reduced their request. So at this time, they are simply requesting a 100-square-foot variance from the 800 maximum, 800 square foot maximum. I just want to give you all that history in case you have questions about why. So this is where the applicant is proposing to place the garage. It would be at the end of the driveway, quite a typical location. The applicant is requesting a variance from Section 2.304, which mandates accessory structures in the R1 district, the single-family district, can be no greater than 800 square feet, the area of the first floor of the structure, primary structure on the property, or 15% of the parcel. So based off that, it was determined that the rule for this property would be 800 square feet. The applicant is requesting a 900-square-feet structure necessitating a 100-square-foot variance. As I already explained, the applicant previously came forward in September 18th of 2023. The ZBA made a motion to postpone the case to provide the applicant an opportunity to work with staff on a reduced request that better align with the city's zoning ordinance. The applicant has returned with a reduced request for a 900-square-foot accessory structure. This is where the property sits within our zoning map. Here is Cottage Street. Woodward is over here. You can see it sits within R1 neighborhood almost entirely. The property is actually, it looks like it's two lots here, but it's, these are actually combined. So it's one larger lot than a typical lot in the neighborhood. And then the accessory structure would be in kind of the southeastern corner. This color here, that's two-family residential. The rest is one-family. These images were taken from street view, just giving you an idea of what the property looks like. You can see the house is completely consistent with the other houses in the neighborhood. The structure would be discreetly placed to the rear of the property. So the applicant did provide floor plans showing a 30-by-30-foot accessory structure. I did want to draw your attention to one concern staff had, but we believe this can be resolved with a condition. So on the plans that were provided, it states right here that it's going to be a living area. So while you can have a garage, you can have a shed, you can use it. I believe the applicant previously stated they were going to use it for a gym. You are not allowed to use it as an accessory dwelling. So I just want to make sure, any approval that this board issues, it would be recommended from staff that you apply a condition to that approval stating that the use of the structure will not be for residential, no dwelling. So relevant, I'm not going to read all of these. You know what an accessory structure is by this point. This is a very typical request you guys receive. And as I've already explained, staff reviewed this calculation to determine the 800-square-feet rule applies to this property. So then you have your standard, standards that you use for dimensional variances. I'm not going to read all of them, you're familiar at this point, but these are here for your reference if you need to see them later. And then here is my analysis on those standards. So for standard one, the strict application of this ordinance allows a property owner to construct an accessory structure at 800 square feet. There are no unique circumstances in this request. While the vehicles should be stored in the accessory structure, the fitness or related storage could be stored in the existing house or within an addition on the principal structure that meets the setback requirements. Two, the standards of approval suggest that to grant a variance, it should only benefit the applicant, but also be consistent with fairness for other property owners. Three, while the plans do not show the height of the structure, the applicant may not build an accessory structure in excess of 15 feet. Four, there does not appear to be anything unique about the property justifying the need for an accessory structure of this size. While they are sharing plans and desires in their application for extra space, it's unclear what hardship they are facing that necessitates this variance. Five, the request for a structure larger than what is permitted in the ordinance is based on the applicant's desire and does not appear to be the result of a hardship. And six, while there do not appear to be other accessory structures greater than 800 square feet in the immediate area, the applicant has reduced their request from over 1,220 square feet to just 900 square feet, representing a request that is more suitable and harmonious with the existing neighborhood. And with that, I have sample motions. Do you have any questions for me?
I have one more question. You're saying it's going directly behind the house, but his plot plan looks like it's more to the empty lot next door?
So it's not directly behind the house, it's going to be along the driveway back right here.
Okay. So does the applicant own the empty lot next door?
So the parcel, the parcel line is here, that's my understanding, it'll be right here. It's not going to be.
Okay.
Over into the left.
Back into the left.
Back and a little bit, yeah.
Okay. A garage.
Garage, detached garage.
No living quarters.
No living quarters, right, right, right. And then although a question, when we were working with him, excuse me, my mic's not working. You came up with 35 by 35, we're only talking a couple of feet that, you know, if it reduced a foot or so on the depth that you'd been in compliance, was there any reason why 35, 35?
So it's actually 30.
So it's actually 30 by 30. So this is what the applicant has brought forward for you. That's all I can state. I would direct that question more to the applicant.
Okay. I don't know if there's anything. Okay.
Nothing scientific.
Any other questions for administration? Would the applicant like to speak? State your name and address.
Hello, Jessica Spinosa, 256 Cottage Street, Pontiac, Michigan. Yeah, I shouldn't have said living space. I didn't even look at that detail, sorry. But yeah, it's just a garage to have, like you said, because the original owners, like previous from us, I think they tried to make, because there's a cement plot back there. But yeah, we just want to, I guess, extend it because we did extend the driveway just so it can be enough space to move in. But yeah, but no living space, I don't, I miss that detail.
So you just want to align it directly with the driveways?
Yeah, like have the doors of the driveway entering from that. So we don't have to like do anything else.
If it helps, my understanding is roughly where the trampoline is. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jessica.
More forward where the cement plot.
So here more.
Extend that, yeah.
Any questions for the applicant? All right, seeing none, public hearing, like to open the public hearing? Would anyone like to speak from the public? Seeing none, closed public hearing. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, you make.
I move to approve the requested variance from Section 2.304 to allow for a 900-square-foot accessory structure at 256 Cottage Street based on the findings of fact outlined in the staff report with the restriction that this space is not used as living quarters.
I second.
So we've got a motion from Burke, second by May. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Let me finish writing, hold on.
No.
All right, Commissioner Anderson. I do that a lot, you're right.
Alphabetical.
A is for Anderson.
Let's start, I'll start with May this time. Commissioner May.
Yes.
Commissioner McClellan.
Yes.
Commissioner Bueno.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Burke.
Yes.
And Commissioner Bavacqua.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So I'll follow up with you tomorrow. Your next step is basically to go forward with an application to start building.
Next item is miscellaneous. We do not have anything, all right? Staff communications.
Sure, I would like to update the ZBA just about the master plan process. Planning Commission reviewed the draft master plan at last Wednesday's meeting. They made a motion of support for it and it's going to City Council next Tuesday. The master plan will be, so there's a resolution before City Council. If they draft it, we will publish it on the website. We've got a webinar that's scheduled on Wednesday to basically learn how to view it, what it means, how did we get to this point in the process, and how to give feedback. We are, if City Council approves this resolution, we are going to have a public hearing process on this plan from February 4th, which is the City Council meeting, all the way till mid, at least mid-April, if not longer. So this is a 200-some-page document. I know in different roles, Mr. Bavacqua and Ms. Burke were also representatives in different capacities on this plan. There was a lot of public engagement and we're, I can say that I'm very happy with the plan, but at the same time, please let us know, even the Planning Commission. There were little hints of notes of suggestions and those are great things to let us know. It's been a wonderful process to create this, working with the community, sharing the results. You know, did we, there was even one session at Welcome Baptist Church. We basically said, this is our assumption for each of these goals. Did we get this right? And people would, on their phones, would actually fill out one through five. And a lot of them were very positive of, yes, you've been listening to us correctly. So I would just share, there's no specific ask of the ZBA, but this is a process that's going forward. Please share with the community. We, you've probably heard this from me 10 times, but we want to make this foundational as a document. This master plan's not covering everything we can, but this is hopefully the basis that we can get started. We can start talking about other topics a few years from now and build upon this. We also want to make it attainable, make the goals and recommendations and action items actually something that, you know, is workable for both the city and the city's partners to achieve in the city. And then we just want to make it respected that the people, you know, are confident about this plan. The residents understand the direction the city's looking to go as a little bit of a roadmap. So that's really the status on that. But I will say, you know, one of the recommendations is a new zoning code. And so I, and we have budget, we're probably going to roll that into the next fiscal year, but we anticipate an RFP potentially going out maybe in May to seek a consultant to help us with the new zoning ordinance. And I, while I foresee a process that we potentially might have a committee and I could see the potentially a few ZBA members as part of that committee to really help us through that process, obviously a few from Planning Commission, a few from other branches of the city, but that's really what I would look forward to. I know I've been coming here for just over two years, maybe not at every meeting, but there, I know there are definitely some things that Corey and I have gotten from this board, but I think it's going to help us really clean up the ordinance, but also make it align with where the city wants to move with its vision. So are there any questions on that? Okay.
Was it any major changes or?
I, I think the big thing to take a look at is the future land use map. This really is the basis for a new zoning map. It's not a, we're not adopting a new zoning map with this, but I think it's really working with our commercial corridors to make sure we have alignment on Auburn, on West Huron, because right now there's a smattering of different land uses next to each other that are not complementing each other, even so much as we have some neighborhoods in the city that have random industrial uses. And we want to make sure that as we go through the next zoning district, zoning map update, we may have, create a map that does have some legal non-conformities. Those uses that are there may continue, but if there is a redevelopment, it may really further define and help us align with where we want to go in the city. So take a look at that. I think that's one of the more interesting things, but there's many, many other things in there as well. I know it's not related to ZBA, but workforce development is also in there, so, which is unique to Pontiac. Right now, it is not on any website, but it will be in City Council packets. So it was in the Planning Commission packet for last week. It will be in City Council's packet next week, but once City Council adopts it, the resolution on Tuesday, we're going to put it on visionponiac.com and maybe a few other places, which is the master plan's website. The next meeting is scheduled for February 24th?
Fourth.
Yeah, the 24th. We are anticipating one or two items, but we need to see how the next couple of days shake out. We will definitely let you know.
I won't be here, just so you know, for the next two meetings.
I do want to jump in real quick, just to remind the board. We do have our annual report. Usually it's handled in January. We're going to be handling it at your next meeting, but you can expect your annual report in your next packet.
Justin Curry did work on that. We need to update it a little bit for the December meeting. We've just been caught on other things. And I did want to share that an offer has been made to a Planner One. I'm not, I can't announce the name, but we hope they'll be at the February meeting.
Yeah, very good.
To a new, a replacement for Justin's position, a Planner One. Justin Curry, that was to the ZBA, yeah.
All right, go ahead.
Or ask the, ask the.
I would like to request and see if it's possible, because of the holidays again.
Microphone, please.
Because of the holidays again next month, the ZBA meeting will be on the fourth Monday, which also conflicts with our District Two meeting that I have to lead. It starts at 7:00, so I was going to see if it would be possible to start at 6:00 next month only, instead of 6:30.
That's fine with me.
Was that the motion?
Yeah, February. Just to move next month to start time of 6:00.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call or?
Sure.
All right, Commissioner.
Well, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then are we at adjournment now? Anybody make?
Sure.
He's got sugar issues over there.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Got a motion by Burke and second by McClellan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Adjourned.